I'd like to call the Mentor City Council regular meeting of Tuesday, March 7th, 2017, to order. I will be giving the invocation this evening. Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
My ladies and gentlemen, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling. Here. Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Krieger.
Here.
Mr. Landik.
Here.
Mr. Marne.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Mr. Donovan.
Mr. Donavon.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
And the regular meeting of February 21st, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Donavon.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-22.
An ordinance to authorize revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Members of council, this simply adds additional appropriations to the 2017 budget for the purpose of senior center lunch program costs. These amounts were not in the budget, so we're just adding them in. I recommend approval. Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-22 has been approved. Ordinance number 17-0-23.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to C. Crump, Inc. for the Garfield Park Pond Improvements and Dredging Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. I will ask Mr. Swigger to go over the details of this in a moment, but I'm happy that this project is finally able to go forward. This is, in essence, as much as it will add to the aesthetics of our beautiful Garfield Park, it's also an important water quality measure because it drains a rather large watershed that includes the Great Lakes Mall, which has very little on-site drainage of its own. So, Mr. Swigger.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Five bids were opened Friday, February 3rd, for the Garfield Park Pond Dredging Project. Project will remove approximately 24,000 cubic yards, which is approximately 35,000 tons of sediment from the three-and-a-half-acre pond to provide for approximately five feet of water depth to improve the overall water quality and the recreational benefits of the pond. Just a few more items here. The bid consisted of a base bid and five bid alternates. In considering all the alternates, we believe the best approach to dredging the pond is to allow the pond to drain out and dry over the summer season, perform the dredging in the early fall. By drying the material, it will be more manageable, easier to excavate, load, haul, and spread, and it will be less messy. It should also reduce the number of truckloads required to haul the material off-site. It's recommended that alternate one, the installation of a pond drain, and alternate five, the dredging of the pond with the extended drying period, be awarded. Bids received for these items range from a low of approximately $447,000 to a high of approximately $905,000. The engineer's opinion of probable construction cost is approximately $500,000. The contractor will transport the dredged material to Springbrook property on Heasley Road, and city forces will spread the material. Any repaving necessary at Garfield Park as a result of this project will be included in a 2018 road repair program. In all cases, the low bid was received from C. Crump Incorporated of Hubbard, Ohio. This bid was found to be in compliance with all contract requirements. Therefore, recommended that alternates one and five be awarded to C. Crump Incorporated in the amount of $447,588. It's anticipated that the work to drain the pond down will begin the spring of this year, and dredging will begin in September, with the substantial completion specified for November 15th, 2017. Thank you.
Madam President?
Mr. Donovan.
Mr. Swigger, is that the overflow on the, I think that's the west side, is that going to exist after the pond is complete? Is that going to stay?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Blake. Madam President, Mr. Swigger, could you give us a little bit more understanding? The dredgings are going to be brought to Springbrook Park, and they're going to be spread out. And, you know, my understanding is that's a lot of nutrients in the dredging there. Any place in particular that we're going to use that? I know that we had talked about wildflowers and mounding. So I don't really have a sense of how much material this is, even though I've seen, you know, estimates of the cubic yards. What are we going to be able to do with that? Are we going to be able to do mounding with that, that we had talked about?
Maybe I can answer some of that, Councilman Blake. Interestingly, this timing might be in our favor on this project. One of the things that we, council is aware of, is that we had a good meeting last week with the Army Corps of Engineers with respect to our Two-Town Detention and Stream Restoration Project. And we believe that with a little bit of luck, we might be in a position to see construction out there in the fall. That would actually coincide nicely with the removal of this dewetted or dewatered, excuse me, dewatered sediment, which is correct, you're correct, is very high in nutritional value, which would mix nicely with the clays that are not as rich that we would be pulling out of the Two-Town area. So it would be, so this material, along with the material from Two-Town, would be used for mounding around the perimeter. It would be used for mounding on the interior areas where we would be planting prairie grasses and other type of vegetation. It would be used for both creation of mounds and to enrich the soil where we would be planting those prairie grasses. And being familiar with the master plan, the working master plan, most of those areas will ultimately be on the interior area of the walking paths.
I think this is great.
Yeah, this is, again, if timing works out for us, this will be a nice solution.
Perfect timing for these projects. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-23 has been approved. We have an addendum to the new legislation, resolution number 17-R-104.
Resolution opposing the state of Ohio governor's proposed 2018-2019 budget, which proposes centralized collection of net profit tax returns and other provisions related to the municipal income tax, which will cause a substantial loss of revenue needed to support the health, safety, welfare, and economic development efforts of Ohio municipalities and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank council for placing this on, adding this to your agenda on short notice. I think most of this council remembers the fight that we put up with the last legislation that came through, which was House Bill 5, that introduced the idea of, originally introduced the idea of centralized municipal income tax collections, along with a whole batch of other provisions that impacted how persons and businesses would submit and bring forward their tax returns through an annual basis. That legislation was modified greatly as a result of local efforts all across the state of Ohio, and it worked, it turned out to be a pretty good bill in most minds after that. This one takes a step back from that, we believe. What is being proposed as part of House Bill 49, which is the budget bill for the state's biennial budget, includes language that would allow businesses to not only file their returns through the gateway, which we're not opposed to, it's happening now, but to submit their tax payments directly. It would require, it would also be assessed, at this point, a 1% charge for the benefit of having that service provided by the state. And in essence, we just think it's a very bad idea for local revenues, in particular income tax revenues, to be collected at the state level. It's a first step toward central collection of all revenues, we believe, and once our revenues are no longer our own to keep and hold and distribute as we see fit, when we're asking for those revenues to be given back to us, or where there's a middleman, the state has shown in its history with the local government fund that when their needs take higher priority than our own needs, they have gobbled up that revenue. So we don't want to put them in a position to make that decision in the future. We believe that there's already great efficiency in place by not just our local government, but most local governments across the state. We also have two very efficient and effective private collection agencies that do collections on behalf of many, many Ohio communities, and they have been effective for us in the past. So we believe that this is an unnecessary step in another big grab of local control, which we have slowly seen erode over the years. So we believe that this is something that we would like our legislators to reconsider, including as part of the budget bill, and we're certainly happy to have discussion with them, and we will be. But we would ask council, I know you've had the chance to look at this carefully, we would ask council to approve this so that we can immediately forward it on to our four representatives in the state legislature.
Ken, I have a quick question. You stated that it would allow businesses to submit their tax payments through the gateway.
Yes, business net profits.
Does this require it or just allow it?
It does not require it, no.
But that could be the next step, is what, so in other words, they could be submitting through different methods then?
They could, right. And then the problem with that is that when those, and we pointed this out with the filing, that the responsibility to audit and answer questions and work directly with these tax-paying accounts in our community still rests with the local community. So obviously, there's a disconnect when they're filing and paying directly to Columbus, and they're trying to get answers to their tax questions through the local office here. So that is one element of it that we see as sort of, not only disconnect, but really doesn't allow for very effective service to those taxpayers.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Blake.
Ken, what's the timeline on this? When is, is this a budget vote that is coming up soon? I mean...
Well, interestingly, we not had some other things going on today. There was a good chance that I would have made myself available to testify because the House was holding hearings today, and that was, we were informed of that at very short notice, that they would be holding hearings on this particular issue. So usually, when these things go to hearing, once they get out of hearing, the House tends to act pretty quickly, and then the Senate takes it up. But since it's a House bill, the fight generally is in the House.
Do you know, this just seems to be such a bad deal for every municipality in the state. I would hope that if they pass this, we would see a pretty big lawsuit that just about every municipality, based on home rule, would counter the state on this, I would hope.
I would agree with you, Councilman. I think there's a very good chance that this would be challenged.
There just doesn't seem to be a single element in this that benefits the municipality at all. I mean, getting quarterly payments where we've been used to.
Yeah, it's another...
I mean, there's just element after element that puts us at a disadvantage, so, thank you. Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Resolution number 17-R-104 has been adopted. Second reading. Ordinance number 17-0-21, as amended.
An ordinance amending Part 5, Chapter 505 of the codified ordinances of the city of Mentor, 2006, as amended. The same relating to general offenses, animals and fowl, definitions and feeding, or harbor of nuisance health-risk animals.
Okay, we have a couple of people that would like to speak on this ordinance tonight. The first, we have Cindy Valerio. Please identify yourself, Cindy.
Hi, I'm Cindy Valerio. You want my address and everything?
Please.
225 East 266 Euclid. And I'm here representing Community Cat Companions, Inc. First of all, I want to thank all of you for all the hard work that you've put into this amendment. I know that there have been a lot of emails and phone calls going back and forth between Mrs. Dowling, Mr. Krieger, and Mr. Henning and myself. And I know that you know or have learned way more about feral cats than you ever wanted to, I'm sure, or ever thought you would know, but I think the result has been a very, very nice compromise. I feel that it's very balanced and fair, that it benefits not only the city, and that it addresses a problem in a very effective and humane manner, which of course benefits the cats and the community as a whole, but it also has accountability for caregivers as well as for the animal welfare organizations that oversee the caregivers. So I feel that is a very, very workable ordinance as it stands now. What I'd like to do is just give a really quick, brief history of where we've started and where we would hope to go as a group and with the city of Mentor, and then April wants to talk about the ordinance specifically. But two years ago, in April coming up, myself and a number of other people attended what was a city council meeting in the city of Willowick. Not unlike this situation, there was a neighbor dispute that prompted the city to consider enacting a feeding ban of feral and stray cats. So, you know, like we did here, we went, we talked, and the mayor at the time, Mayor Bondi, at the conclusions, asked us if we would be willing to form a group. And he passed around a legal pad, and everybody put their name and their email addresses on this legal pad. A day or two later, we received an email stating that he would like us to attend a meeting the following week at city council, you know, in the city hall. And it was, we met with him, and with, at the time, was Councilman Regovich, who is now the mayor of Willowick. But, and that is how Willowick Community Cats got started. And then Councilman Regovich, at the time, suggested that we go under Community Cat Companion so that we could function as a nonprofit. But a few months later, I got an email from April Haviland, who is the founder of Mentor Community Cats, asking for assistance. She was trapping a colony at Mentor Park Apartments. It was bigger than she had anticipated. She, you know, she wanted some help. And out of that came Mentor Community Cats. A few months later, Donna Bond, who was a councilperson for Eastlake, contacted me. She was a friend of mine, actually, and said, "I want to start a group in Eastlake." And she and Lisa Fiorallo founded Eastlake Community Cats. We're now working with Sherri Kosky, who's a councilwoman for the city of Woodcliff, who's interested in starting a group, and we've been approached by other cities and other residents in other cities about starting groups there as well. So what we're really hoping, and what my goal is, is that this ordinance and how it is here tonight, as it stands now, will become a model for other cities in the county, and that eventually Lake County will be a place where TNR is the normal way to handle these situations, and then we can develop more resources and everything for the county. But again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Cindy. Okay, next we have April Haviland.
I guess, I know you guys, as Cindy just said, have been thrown a ton of information about feral cats lately and colony care and TNR. I guess just the one, I wanted to give you guys one last chance, I guess, to ask us how we would kind of see this relationship working. I guess from our standpoint, we'd like to see it modeled a lot after how Willowick currently runs, where if a citizen would reach out to council or call someone, they would send them Mentor Community Cats information, and then we can go over with them how TNR works, our processes, the costs involved, and how we can best help. And then, as the ordinance states, on a monthly basis, I believe, or whatever the basis is that you specify, just reporting the number of cats, how many we've TNR'd, the number that we are aware of that are more outdoor, and then in terms of location, just the general vicinity of the area. We, Hill Willowick does it, they do not report the specific addresses of each individual colony, simply because the caregivers then are less likely to come forward, they're worried that someone's going to be keeping an eye out on them or ready to report them to the city or get them in trouble for other stuff. But just wanted to see if you had any more questions, I guess, before. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Shane Guy.
Hello, Shane Guy, 1859 West Jackson Street, Painesville. I work at DHL in Mentor. Thanks to council to working so much with Cindy and April and considering all of this. I just had a couple of questions. I'm not familiar with the protocol of wording ordinances, but I wondered if a feral cat is still designated as a nuisance health-risk animal, and if 505.21 prohibits feeding, harboring, but then 505.3 makes provisions for feeding and harboring, isn't that mutually contradictory? Would it be more in terms of formal logic if 505.21 prohibited feeding and harboring, et cetera, except see 505.3? And again, if that's not protocol, if this is common in ordinances, then I'm just not familiar with that. Yeah, and it's all fantastic. The only thing I was a little concerned about was the provision for if a colony grows, that the caretaker can be revoked as a caretaker. I mean, there are times when a caretaker for a colony simply packs up and leaves. There's an area on the east side of Mentor where there are probably a half a dozen colonies within two and a half miles. And when I first found out about a couple of them, I slowly found out that there were probably four people in the area who had already TNR'd most of these cats before I ever even heard of them. One person did sell her house. She had shelters in the backyard, she had a small colony, and when she did, she simply packed up the shelters and quit feeding the cats because she was afraid that the new owners of the house would not like having cats in the backyard. Now, with that many colonies in the area, it's almost definite that those cats migrated to other colonies. If you've got a colony of adult cats and something like that happens, a couple of cats migrate, they become part of the new colony, then that number is going to grow by a couple of cats, and it may not, it may not go back down to the previous number for a year or two, or maybe longer, potentially. And just those kind of potential penalties at the end, I think maybe are still a little frightening to some caretakers. I know one person spoke with me who said that she had actually contacted council, and she had briefly read the ordinance, and she said, "Well, this seems like it could penalize caretakers. Shouldn't it be the people dumping cats who are penalized?" And she immediately was frightened. Also, the part where it says that the locations of colonies would be reported to the city, I think that's still kind of a concern. People are just afraid that their addresses and names are going to be reported to council and that this may get them in trouble in some way. Most cat caretakers really act from the heart, very emotionally, and they don't always, you know, consider these things, and some are a little skittish and a little easily frightened. And considering the situation where I mentioned that, you know, there were a half a dozen colonies, and most of these had already been TNR'd before I ever found out about them, there's been a lot of effective TNR before the council ever addressed the idea of feral cats existing. And based on that idea, you know, I wouldn't want anything scary in the wording to make people maybe take a step backwards instead of forwards. So those were just my questions and concerns, and it looks like from the nodding of Councilman Landik that I'm wrong about the wording of the ordinance, that those do not mutually contradict each other.
If I may answer?
If he's like to.
Yeah, I think we've worked long and hard to make just an exception for the TNR program, but other than that, there is a nuisance animal designation, and the ban is being expanded to include the feral cat.
Yeah. It's just that in 502.1, it specifically says, you know, feeding and harboring is prohibited, and then it doesn't mention 505.3, which specifically lays out provisions for when you can feed and harbor feral cats, which to me seemed like those two sections just contradict each other. It's kind of like saying object A is blue, but object A is not blue. I don't know.
Thank you.
Exception.
Thank you.
Okay. That is our last speaker on that. Richard, did you want to make some clarifications?
Well, we did make some edits, actually quite a few, you know, in response to some comments from, you know, I guess, you know, it was just one spokesperson, but from Mentor Community Cats, so, and one of the issues was, you know, deregistering somebody that used to say "shall," now it says "may." So we've allocated discretion, you know, to the administration on whether that would even be done. But council wanted that we have an ordinance that has some teeth to it also, that this works from the council's point of view and the administration as a control feature, as well as it works for the volunteers who want to help with the trap neuter return program. And so to the extent that we tried to get everything right, in this final version, my suggestion to the members of the community that are interested in this is, after a year, if it's not working right, it can always be looked at again. This is, you know, I think the goal that I've heard here is to get something that does work and works well, and we've taken what Willowick has, and because we could work off of it, we think we've made some improvements to it, just because there's been more time put into it, and we had a foundation upon which to work. And a year from now, our experience with how this operates will give us, you know, some guidance as to whether we do need to make any additional amendments. So I think it can be considered a work in progress. As you learn more and bring that information to us, it'll be assimilated. And one thing that I did want to mention, though, that hasn't been brought up yet, though, but at least tonight has been mentioned, is there seems to be some confusion as to when we call a feral cat an animal or a health-risk nuisance. And some people seem to think that they can then go out and trap them and destroy them, as are done with skunks and raccoons. And I wanted to make this very clear, which is, you know, people are hearing, you know, what trappers do out in the community and are thinking that that is now going to apply to feral cats, and that is absolutely wrong. What the professional trappers are licensed under the state, and they have to follow rules and regulations that are published in the Ohio Administrative Code. And so when a professional trapper who has a license traps a skunk or a raccoon, they're under an obligation to be destroying that animal. There is no mention in the Ohio Administrative Code in that section regarding destroying those animals of feral cats. The fact that the Mentor Code of Ordinance... The fact that the Menor Code of Ordinances addresses feral cats as a local health risk nuisance animal does not elevate or amend the Ohio Administrative Code. If anybody out there thinks that they, it's open season on feral cats in the city of Mentor because of this ordinance, they're greatly mistaken, and that can actually be charged under the state code now as a fifth degree felony. And if anybody noticed, the newspaper article, I think it was in this morning's or yesterday's Plain Dealer, somebody just got a year in jail for killing a companion animal. So let there be no mistake. If you want to try to prove that a, that a cat was a feral cat after it's dead, to avoid a prosecution of killing a companion animal, that doesn't seem like a good bet. And our ordinance is not amending the Ohio Administrative Code, so let there be no confusion about that. Killing cats is going to land you in trouble, so don't do that. And don't think that anything that we've done here today permits that. You couldn't be, you know, further mistaken. So a little information about what professional trappers do with skunks and raccoons does not translate into what the city of Mentor is attempting to do now to regulate how feral cat colonies and feral cats are treated going forward. And just want to make sure everyone's real clear on that. You know, you're, you're in jail. It's a fifth degree felony killing a companion animal, and that law will be enforced. So in any, and I can answer questions if there are any. The way that it's written, I think, will pass muster, and I can understand that, you know, how it's written might be a little bit too much legalese, but in my estimation, this is going to work just fine, except it may need some fine tuning as we go along. We would need a motion to amend and incorporate the new language as indicated in the red font color, and then, once it's amended, go forward from there if you want to.
Move to amend.
Second.
Madam President. If I could, before we move to a vote, I'm sorry. But I just wanted to clarify that, you know, it looks like all this is being done by volunteers, and I don't sense that any city money is going into this, so, you know, my thanks to the people who are volunteering to do this, because this is a lot, you know. So I think that's, I think that's wonderful. So thank you to Menor Community Cats.
All the community cats.
Who is it?
All the community. There's multiple, there's multiple groups.
Yes. Okay, great. So there we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Please call the roll. Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-21 as amended has been approved. So it is done. And I would like to thank everyone on council and all the people from the cat community. It's really been a learning experience, and I think it was right when we said we know more about community cats, and Richard has put a lot of time and effort and answered probably more questions than he ever thought he was going to have to about feral cats. But I think that we've come up with something that's doable and is going to be a benefit to the community. So thank you to everybody, and the administration as well for all their input. Okay, so third readings.
Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Just one note, because we have an audience here of a lot of folks who are going to be participating in, in these programs. This was not passed by an emergency, so these rules will be 30 days before they fully come into effect, and then the city administration will have its own administrative protocol for registering the animal welfare organizations in the colonies, so look for that.
We're just happy to turn it over to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Third readings, we have none. Managers report.
Thank you, Madam President. We have several pavement open cut requests, ask council to consider. The first is from Pain in Pain Builders Incorporated for a sanitary sewer connection at 9248 Headlands Road. Ask for your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Thank you. And second is from Aquil, Ohio, for work related to the replacement of a six-inch water line with an eight-inch water line on Marigold Road, and Councilman Krieger will be happy to see this one come forward, because this is in anticipation of our total reconstruction of Marigold Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Thank you, council. And finally, last request is from Brunner Sandin Dietrich LLC for work related to providing fire water service at 8450 Mentor Avenue, which is new construction.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Thank you, council. And finally, last request is from Brunner Sandin Dietrich LLC for work related to providing fire water service at 8450 Mentor Avenue, which is new construction.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Thank you, council. This year, the yard waste collection program will begin on April 3 and run through the second full week of December, beginning in April as well. The Lake County Solid Waste District will conduct a series of drop-off days for items such as computers, tires, and household hazardous waste. That 2017 schedule is currently on their website, and we will be announcing those, those drop-offs individually as they come up. Police Department wants to remind the public that with the St. Patrick's Day holiday coming up soon, to plan a sober ride home before you go out to party. Just one or two drinks can impair your judgment and increase the risk of getting arrested, or worse, causing a crash and harming others and/or yourself. Between 2011 and 2015, 252 people died in a car crash during the St. Patrick's Day holiday, and our Menor Police Department will be at full staff for that day and throughout that weekend, and will be placing a focus on impaired drivers. Very happy to announce to council that our engineering department had a very productive pre-construction meeting with representatives from Norfolk and Southern Railroad last week, and the work with Norfolk and Southern in the right of way is expected to start in April and finish up in June, and that includes, includes both the roadwork that we have to finish up, as well as the actual crossing gates and related components as well. We'll be scheduling a meeting with CSX soon to share similar information, and hopefully we will be just as successful as getting that underway. That really is, once that railroad crossing work is done, that's really the last bit before we can open up that roadway, so with any luck, we'll have the project open by the end of summer. Parks Department has a couple of exciting events to announce. First of all, our newest art exhibit titled Unveiled kicked off last Friday evening with Mentor native and photographer artist Johnny O. Reception was held in our city hall lobby, which was attended by approximately 90 people. Unveiled is a new exhibit that will, which is, will become a series where we will feature several different Lake County artists, and the idea is to host a new artist every other month. We'll feature another in June, and we are planning incorporating the Dorothy Maloney Art Show into this series beginning in the fall. Also have a fun and interesting mystery and suspense event returning to Wildwood with a live roaring twenties murder thriller on March 16th and 17th, that's 7:00 PM, at the Wildwood Cultural Center. Solve the mystery as part of a flamboyant roaring twenties party, complete with music and hors d'oeuvres, and a fabulous twenties attire is encouraged. Registration for that is ongoing, but we'll fill up quickly. And then finally, we have one new business that we want to announce, Sparkle &amp; Shine Makeup Studio at 8500 Station Street in the Matchworks Building, right, Ron?
That's correct.
And we wish, we thank them for their investment and wish them great success in their new endeavor. That's all. Thank you.
Madam President. If you have a chance, everybody, go down there and see Johnny O's artwork down in the lobby down there. It's unbelievable. I saw there were some prices on the, on the, on the art, and how can you contact him to, maybe if you wanted to purchase one of those?
We do have that content information. I would suggest just calling the Menor Recreation Department, and we can put you in touch with the artist.
Fantastic.
And several of those pieces were sold at his opening last Friday.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Relatively inexpensive, too.
When we get across those tracks, we're going to have a serious ribbon cutting.
You can.
That's what you know. I mean, in our high school band, I mean, we're going to go all.
We're going to fight over the scissors.
For 20 years.
Why don't we stretch the ribbon across the tracks until the train comes?
We're going to do it. We're going to do it right.
Do it right, I agree. Hopefully, the weather will be warm still.
Good.
Okay. Clerk's correspondence.
Council is in receipt of the Menor Municipal Court 2016 Annual Report.
Commissioning Committee reports, we have none. Old business?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Got to accompany members of the administration and consultants up to Buffalo to speak to the Army Corps of Engineers last Thursday, and I think we can report this as a very positive step. I want to thank Congressman Joyce's office for participating and helped facilitate that step, and also residents from Ward 3 that I knew, know of, that wrote to the councilman, to the congressman, and asked for his assistance so that we could take a step towards future flood relief in Ward 3. So thanks to administration as well.
Thank you, Councilman Landig, for your participation. Very helpful.
Any other old business? Okay, new business?
Madam President, if there's no new business?
We have a person before council.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have one person before council this evening, Sue Dengel. Please come up and identify yourself and give your address, Sue.
Good evening, council. My name is Sue Dengel. I live at 5960 White Oak Drive. I'm here tonight to ask council to consider a modification to Mentor Codified Ordinance 505.13. The modification I'm requesting would allow residents with fewer than two acres to own egg-laying hens for personal consumption. Now, I am not an expert on the topic and have never personally owned my own chickens, but I have been studying the topic for several years in hopes of doing so. I will take the next few moments to share with you what I do know and answer any questions you may have. I'm sure that some of you might think it's odd for someone to want to raise their own chickens, but chickens are relatively quiet and docile. They're not much different than other pets like cats or rabbits, but they have the ability to provide fresh eggs each day. Most people mistakenly think that you need a rooster for a hen to lay eggs, but that is not the case. Anyone who is raising hens to lay eggs for consumption does not want a rooster anywhere near their hens, otherwise the eggs can become fertilized and would not be eaten. The two most common objections that people raise on the topic are the smell of animal waste and the presence of predators. I recently contacted Lisa Samples, owner of Cedar Crest Farm and Feed in Kirtland, to find out how they manage these issues. They are a breeder of heritage and rare chicken breeds. At any given point, they have over 300 chickens on their farm. She says that you will never smell any odor from their farm, and in the five years they have been breeding chickens, they have only lost a few to hawks. She believes it really comes down to chicken owners being properly educated. I believe that since flocks for household consumption are small, the amount of waste would not accumulate to an amount that would cause an unpleasant odor as long as, as long as it is composted or disposed of regularly. Typically, this would be done two to three times per week, if not daily, no different than any good dog owner would do in picking up their dog waste in their own yards. When it comes to predators, chickens can fall victim to predators, just like any other small animal. According to thechickenforum.com, the most common chicken predators in Ohio are dogs, domestic cats, coyote, possum, fox, raccoons, skunks, hawks, and owls. These predators already have an existing presence in any given neighborhood in Menor. Beyond the naturally present food sources like moles, ducks, geese, and wild turkey, possums, raccoons, and skunks commonly find additional food sources in the garbage cans of residents. Unless there is a way to eliminate these currently existing food sources, it is virtually impossible to eliminate those predators from suburban neighborhoods. When you consider the percentage of residents who would consider establishing their own residential flocks of hens, it is unlikely that this would cause a measurable increase in the existence of the predator population. At night, when most predators are roaming in the neighborhoods, housing chickens in a properly constructed coop or tractor would eliminate the risk of having them fall victim to the predators. Choosing to allow your hens to range freely during the day would subject them to possible attacks, most commonly from hawks. Just about every community in northeast Ohio allows residents to have egg-laying hens without a lot-size restriction. Some that I have researched include Willoughby, Highland Heights, Mayfield, Shaker Heights, even the city of Cleveland, just to name a few. The change to the Menor ordinance could be as simple as removing the word chickens from the existing ordinance and replacing it with roosters, or adding an entirely new section that could specify any necessary restrictions around coop construction, waste removal, or anything else that council feels is appropriate. I have compiled some common ordinance language from other communities, and I can either email them to council members or hand them out after the meeting, whichever is convenient, if interested. And at this point, I would like to thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer, answer any questions you might have at this time.
Thank you.
Mrs. President.
Yes.
Would our law director like to receive legislation that may have gone unnoticed by us?
I'm sorry.
Would you like to receive the legislation that these other communities? I'd like to see your opinion on it.
It's a...
Sure.
Okay.
That's the right answer.
Okay.
I just, one of my best friends, as Ray and Janet know, had chickens for years, and now he doesn't have them anymore. I personally...
They've had them for seven generations.
Right. I miss the eggs. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Madam President, if there's no other new business, I'd like to move that we go into executive session to discuss pending litigation and to discuss preparing for collective bargaining sessions.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
[inaudible][1725.88]
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.